Good afternoon and welcome to City Council Meeting for December the fourteenth. I'll start, Madam Clerk, with the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Carlson.
Present.
Counselor Middleton Hope.
Present.
Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Counselor Parker.
Here.
Counselor Schmidt Rempel.
Here.
Acting Mayor Dotick.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Croson.
Present.
And Mayor Hagan.
Present.
All present, thank you.
I'll read the acknowledgement statement. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the matey nation of Alberta, Region Three. Start off with recognitions. Far right, Counselor Middleton Hope.
None, thank you.
Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Croson.
Not today, thank you.
Your pal, Counselor Palladino.
Nothing today, thank you.
Counselor Parker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, I just want to, this is our last City Council Meeting of the year, and I just want to wish my colleagues, members of administration, city staff, and also, of course, the citizens of Lethbridge, a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, or whatever you're celebrating over this festive season. Be safe, please follow proper, safe guidelines, but most importantly, Happy Holidays to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Acting Mayor Dotick.
Yes, just two quick shout-outs. I attended last week two separate Christmas parties for, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Green Acres, one being at Garden View Lodge and the other one at Heritage Lodge, and I thoroughly had a great time and enjoyed myself, and I just wanted to thank Green Acres for all the great work that they do. Thank you.
Counselor Campbell.
Nothing. Thanks.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Just a bit of a recognition of a past event. I went to the LSCO, I believe it was their fundraiser, All Is Calm. It was the first time I've been in a theater in over two years. It was amazing to get back into the theater, and it was an excellent production. And on that same note, I believe tomorrow night, I get to go into a theater again. New West Theater is opening their first, first live performance in a venue in two years, and it's owed to Joy. I think it's running for the next couple of weeks. If folks get a chance and they're excited to get back into the theater as I am, check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt Rempel.
Nothing at this time.
Right. I'd like to just add here, echo some comments of my colleague there regarding this seasons and that we're in, and I know that we're, we have a lot of different agencies that are working very hard with our families throughout our community, and I was, I reached out to Leopard Family Services this morning, just asked how they were doing when it comes to the Angel Tree Campaign and Christmas Hope, and I received the following, I'd like to read. "Christmas Hope Agencies Are All Experiencing A Surge in Need This Year. So Many More Families Are Asking For Assistance. Food Security Is Posing Challenges Coupled With Rising Prices, And Mental Health Issues Are Increasing. Angel Tree Has Registered 3,237 Children And 98 Adopted Families Among Them. And Children's Services Continues To Call. Our Capacity Has Been Stretched, And We Ask Community To Help Us Provide Gift Bundles For Our Last 739 Children. We Need Everything From Books, Stuffed Animals, Tooks, Smits For Kids, To Board Games And Toys For Every Age. Shovel Wonders And 900 Children Salvation Army At Nearly 600 Children Are Assisting With Any New Registrants. No Child Or Family Will Go Without. We Are Working Together To Make This Happen." So I just want to, to reach out to, to the community and just, if you find it in your heart, if you're able to, to help with this Christmas Hope and help those families that are in need during this time of year. Well, now move on to the adoption of the agenda. A resolution from Acting Mayor Dotick that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one be adopted as presented.
Actually, I have a resolution or, or an amendment to the adoption of agenda. I would, the resolution would read that item ten point one, being the Indigenous Resource Hub, be heard right after item four, being the consent agenda, so it would follow right after the consent agenda. So I would ask for council approval with respect to that amendment.
Okay, with that, with that change for ten point one.
Then I would then ask that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on December fourteen, twenty-one, as amended, be adopted as, as presented. Call the question.
Your worship, I do have one more amendment. If you want to vote on that amendment first.
And first, we can vote on that, the ten point one, moving that to after.
Right after the consent agenda, yes. All those in favor?
All those in favor.[758.63][758.63](Laughter). Anyone opposed?[761.38][761.38](Laughter). I catch it. Thank you, Mayor. And the next, Madam City Clerk, is there anything, any amendments to the agenda?
There's another addition, or sorry, there's an addition to the agenda. It's an urgent business motion from Counselor Middleton Hope. It's titled, "Refuse And Recycling Collection." It requires a two-thirds vote to be added to today's agenda, and at the break, we will recompile the agenda so that council and the public will have it if it does get adopted.
Right. Questions? Counselor Carlson.
Just a question on that, have we, we don't have it yet, so we're voting to add something?
It was emailed to you this morning.
Oh, okay, I haven't had a chance to review. We've been in a long meeting.
It is an urgent business motion, so it is up to council whether they want to add it to the agenda today.
And that's with a two-thirds vote, correct?
Six of the nine.
Six of the nine. Does anybody else have any questions?
Counselor Middleton Hope can, can give a context as to what it is?
Yeah, if you've got, if you do have that, please give us.
Certainly, thank you, your worship. In regards to the complaints that have been generated, in regards to front pickup of refuse, so recycling as well as garbage, we've received a number as council members from groups within the community. What I'd like to do by this motion is to provide direction to deal with this challenge once and for all.
Right, so that would require, again, a two-thirds majority vote, and with that, if there's no further questions, Counselor Parker.
I think it'd be, it should be noted that the two-thirds doesn't mean you endorse it, it just, two-thirds allows it to be on the agenda, so it should be noted that.
So, to have this put on the agenda, if, call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? One opposed. Thank you. Now going back to.
So the agenda as amended.
The agenda as amended.
All right, so the resolution is that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, as amended, be adopted as presented. I call the question?
Question's been called, all in favor? Opposed, so carries, thank you. Next, I have a resolution from Deputy Mayor Croson, the Consent Agenda, four point oh. It's up on the screen. I'm sure everyone has had an opportunity to go through it in our package, and I'll ask if there's any questions. Deputy Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. There is a, there's a lot to unpack in here, so I just want to highlight a few things. One thing you'll notice is, in the motion, we were going to have MPC come to us here in December, a discussion around getting rid of MPC. That has been delayed because legal would like some more time to go through some bylaws. You'll also note that Counselor Parker brought forward several motions earlier in the term. Those have all been now referred to certain SBCs, so Admin has brought them back as promised, but those are going to the SBCs that they have been assigned to. Four point six may seem a bit of an oddball to people, because this is actually an update from last council's work plan. This is on the agenda to wrap things up, but more importantly, this is a placeholder, because once this council formalizes our strategic plan, we will be getting quarterly reports coming up through governance and brought onto council as well. So this is just so people are aware that that will be coming forward. Similar with the operational review, that is the ongoing quarterly reports coming through from the KPMG reports. Four point eight and four point nine are coming up from Cultural and Social SBC. They are for information, except for four point nine, which is directing the city manager to go and find options, which she'll then come back to council, so nothing there that is unexpected. Four, ten, eleven, and twelve are all from Civic Works, they're for information. The one people may find of question is the National Urban Parks. It's not that we didn't think at Civic Works that this was a good idea, we do not meet the requirements for that. Even though administration tried to convince the federal government that we'd be an awesome site for a national urban park, they said we have to get 200,000 people, so we have to grow a bit before we're there. So most things are in there as expected, but there is a lot in that consent agenda, and I just want to make sure everybody understood what was in there before we vote, and unless there are any questions, I will call the question.
Deputy Mayor, question's been called. Oh, there's a question, I'm sorry, Counselor Carlson.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor Hagan. Through you, probably the city clerk, I assume, four point one four, four point one five, those, the dates for those public hearings have not been set, they'll be set sometime in the new year? Is that? Traditionally, we have a date set when we approve first reading.
Brian or Lloyd, if they know.
Through the chair of the councillor, the, the last part of your consent agenda motion would be to set the public hearing for both of those for January eighteenth, four p.m.
Okay, so those are, they will be set. In the reports for them, they'll say it'll be set at some future date, but we do have it.
Yes, councillor.
Thank you.
I'll call the question then.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That's so carries. Now we'll move to the next item on the agenda, ten point one, Indigenous Resource Hub, and I want to know if everybody has received this. Be resolved that City Council receive the report and attachments regarding Indigenous Resource Hub for information. I'll ask if there's any questions first. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Just a quick question, we're just receiving this for information, so probably through you to Acting City Manager, Mr. Fox. Council doesn't need to take any action, the funds are all in place, this is just our administration informing us on, on the process and what's rolling out. Is that correct? Is that the way I'm reading this?
Through the chair, yes, we're bringing this forward as information. As administration looked at all the different areas where we could locate a resource hub, it landed on the Bowman Building through the analysis in the report. We also, looking through it, we didn't need any actual direction from council, so we're informing you, this is the direction that we are taking at this time, and there will be a further decision to make in January at, I believe it's the Cultural and Social SBC, when we bring forward a motion to sign a contract with Kynai Nation or the Blood Tribe to run the resource hub.
Thank you, so that was going to be my next question, that this is just for the information, and in January, the agreement will come back for council to produce and decide on.
Correct.
Thank you.
Acting Mayor Dotick.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, again, as Counselor Carlson has pointed out, this is for information only, so when it comes back to council in the new year, we will be having an opportunity at that time to ask questions, not only on whatever the action item is, but also if we have any questions regarding the report that we received today as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Questions? If not, Deputy Mayor Croson.
Yes, as everyone has noted, this motion is for information. This is a looking at creating a resource hub that will deliver much-needed wellbeing programs and support through a Blackfoot lens. It is looking at using the Bowman Arts Centre and involves several organizations in Lethbridge and in southern Alberta. Funding for the Indigenous Resource Hub has been approved by CWSS Advisory Committee and through City Council, but prior to this, no designated facility has been assigned. And so this is looking at office and programming space at the Bowman, and administration is bringing this forward for information for council and, of course, through council to the public. And unless there are any further debate on this, I will call the question.
Any further debate? I see none. Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Next, I have an official business resolution from Acting Mayor Dotick, six point one, Third River Crossing. Whereas by City Council Resolution dated November thirtieth, two thousand and nine, City Council resolved that Chinook Trail be reconfirmed as a future river crossing, Third River Bridge, location, and whereas an amendment to seek additional right-of-way to be acquired for an additional site, further south of the Chinook Trail option was defeated by council in a vote of five to four. And whereas it would appear that any Third River Crossing built within city limits would have to be solely funded by city funds, and whereas there is an increased likelihood of financial support from other orders of government if the Third River Crossing was further south of the current location, and whereas there's been significant growth in west Lethbridge since the Chinook Trail option was reconfirmed and aforementioned, which may mitigate against, sorry, will mitigate mid. Militate.
Reduce?
Militate, okay, I'm sorry, against the Chinook Trail, crossing as being the most optimum route at the current time. Therefore, be it resolved that administration investigate further potential site or sites for the Third River Crossing further south from the current proposed location, and further be resolved that administration assess the approximate cost to construct the Third River Crossing at the potential site or sites that may be identified, and further be resolved that administration report back to council as to such proposed site or sites and the anticipated cost to construct the Third River Crossing at the site or sites identified no later than September twenty twenty-two. Acting Mayor Dotick.
Yeah, I'm sure council, some councilmen may have some questions. I would ask for indulgence, because I have a little bit of history to give on this, and it may answer some of your questions, so although I'd like to give that history and the reason why I'm bringing this resolution now, and after I'm going to finish my presentation, so to speak, I can open up for questions as well. So this will act as information and my debate, but you'll certainly be given an opportunity to ask questions if you choose to do so. Okay, so, the Third River Crossing has been an issue for decades, as we're all aware. A few city-funded studies at great cost have looked at, among other things, locations, construction costs, impact on flora and fauna, so it's quite interesting reading to see how in-depth those studies have been. Two major routes were considered, being the current proposed site, as well as one going by Popsden Park on the west and ending either south or north of the airport lands on the south side. Land acquisition costs of just over four million dollars were similar, as noted in one study, being the ACOM Road Circulation Study, that I think was done in two thousand eight or two thousand and nine. Environmental issues were similar as well for both sites. However, the cost difference was significant for the further south route, primarily because it was a bit longer, but more so because of the earth-moving costs involved. None of the studies considered the likelihood of which site might be more amenable to receiving financial support from other levels or orders of government. On November thirty, two thousand and nine, there was a resolution brought forward by Mayor Tarlick to confirm the current site as the preferred route. Alderman Sean Ward, as it was known then, proposed an amendment to create a second option. He wanted to preserve two locations, so I just want to make it clear, he wanted to preserve the current site, but also to consider a further side, further south, to take into account the possibility that years down the road, there may be significant changes that might make a more southern route more practical. We knew at that time that we were looking at around twenty thirty as the most likely timeframe involved in terms of a Third River Crossing. The amendment was defeated by a vote of five to four, and the original resolution was passed confirming only the one site. After two thousand and nine, successive discussions with various provincial ministers of transportation made it clear that they would not consider a cost-sharing arrangement with Lethbridge, as the bridge could not be considered as part of a ring road, and further that it was wholly in city limits. The discussions at that time, and I know that things have changed, but at that time, we were contemplating the province covering seventy-five percent of the cost, but as I said, that went nowhere. I left council in twenty thirteen, but my understanding is that the province's position has not changed. During my time on council, I don't recall any conversations with those ministers about whether a more southerly route might be more attractive to the province in terms of a cost-sharing arrangement, because that option was off the table based on the two thousand and nine resolution. From time to time, the Third River Crossing bubbles to the surface as an issue, and I noted on the city website that Mayor Spearman, in July of two thousand and fifteen, wrote an article that indicated the cost of a bridge at that time would be a hundred and sixty to two hundred million dollars. He also wrote that such costs would entail fifteen percent property tax increase for fifteen years. Fast forward to July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and Mayor Spearman sponsored a resolution to add a question to be placed on the upcoming ballot for the municipal election to be held in October. The question read, "Do you agree that City Council should approve plans to construct a third bridge prior to twenty thirty as a municipal capital project priority?" There was also a direction given to administration that they post on the city website, various information, including the tax implications to citizens for the bridge construction. The city, in fact, did do that, and estimated that the bridge would cost about a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred million dollars based on construction, excuse me, in twenty twenty-nine. But there was a big proviso to that assumption, in that they also noted a better estimate would be determined once the Chinook Trail River Crossing preliminary design is completed. That design study is projected to cost four million dollars and is included in the current CIP to be done in twenty twenty-seven, C dash thirty-one, for those who are interested. The website also disclosed that the impact to the operating budget would be fourteen point five to sixteen point seven million in debt payments for fifteen years, resulting in a property tax increase of nine to eleven percent. Thus, to be truly informed, would require citizens to search the website to see the costs involved, although giving information about a tax percentage increase doesn't have the same impact as being told how your property taxes will increase in dollars and cents to fund the bridge. I'm trying to have this question answered in the council inquiry, which appears on today's agenda, essentially as a companion piece, to give citizens an idea as to what the bridge costs translate in terms of how much their property taxes would be expected to rise as a result of building a bridge, and the answer to that is expected to come at a council meeting in January. For those who think that there will be grants available to offset the costs, unless there is a specific dedicated grant that the provincial or federal government would be prepared to advance for the bridge, which there aren't at present, this project will have to likely be paid primarily by city borrowings. In general, grants like the provincial MSI grants who are to be used, then that means other projects could not be built, and as things stand now, we don't have a real idea what the province is prepared to provide in terms of unconditional grants going forward. But going back to July, the July twenty thirteen, twenty-one resolution, Mayor Spearman stated, quote, "By placing the question on the ballot in a non-binding manner, the next council will have some new and informative resident-driven data to analyze moving forward," close quote. That resolution was passed by a vote of six to three. The only new information we have is that sixty percent of the residents that voted answered yes to the question, and forty percent answered no in the last municipal election. What the response doesn't tell me is how many people answered the question with full knowledge of the tax implications to them their yes response entailed. We also know that only thirty-five percent of eligible voters voted in this election, and by extrapolation, that means twenty-one percent of the total eligible voters have answered a non-binding question that they want the bridge to be a capital project priority for. they want the bridge to be a capital project priority for the new council. On the other hand, 14% of the total eligible voters said no. Thus, for whatever reason, 65% of the eligible voters have not weighed in on the question, and one can't make the assumption that if 100% of the voters had voted, the results would have been the same. As a member of city council, I have to represent 100% of the residents regardless of whether they voted for me or whether they voted at all, which brings me to the purpose of the official business resolution and the companion inquiry. The purpose of the official business resolution is to have administration review the existing plans and studies they have regarding the third river crossing in the context of the fact that there have been significant changes to the city footprint since the studies were done, and since the 2009 resolution that identified the current site as the only site, and to come back before September of 2022 and report to council as to whether a more southerly route makes more sense at this juncture. There is no budget implications to this OBR, because I'm not asking for independent consultants to be retained to revisit the issue, but rather to have city staff do the analysis I referred to, and I have met with senior administration and discussed with them that particular issue, and unless I misunderstood what they said, I believe that if any questions were asked of them, they would agree that all basically I'm asking for is to look at the existing studies, look at the change in footprint in the city, and anything else they think relevant, excuse me, without hiring outside experts, and to come back to some sort of conclusion. Now, I don't, I'm not going to prejudge what that conclusion may be, of course, that is something that I leave up to them. So the companion inquiry that I referred to, requesting an analysis of the property tax implication of the third river crossing, will be responded to much sooner than that, as I had indicated. If council supports the official business resolution, it will provide us with the following answers. Is there merit in considering a more southerly route for the third river crossing? Number two, what would the anticipated cost of any southern route roads be? Number three, what are the residential property tax implications in building the bridge? Another point plus for supporting this official business resolution is that it would give us the opportunity to advocate to our provincial and federal governments that we are reviewing the possibility of a more southerly location for the third river crossing to determine if that might open their wallets to contribute dedicated grant money specifically for that project. After all, there is a provincial election coming up in 2023, and that usually does mean that purse strings are loosened somewhat. So, I do apologize for being long-winded, but I wanted to take some time to explain what this resolution was about and what it was not about. It is, in large measure, in response to the non-binding plebiscite referendum results that we received from those that voted, and to give administration a chance to review the documents that they already have in their possession, which is particularly extensive in the context of whatever changes have occurred between 2009, and now to see whether or not this, the current site, still remember, remains the preferred site. At this, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Dodek. Do you have questions? Deputy Mayor Crowson.
Actually, I have a referral motion. I'd like to refer this to Civic Works SBC, who are working on the Transportation Master Plan, and this would fit perfectly into the work they are doing, and they have already promised at Civic Works SBC to be back to council on a regular basis, and this information can be brought back to that mechanism quite well. So I would like to refer this to SBC.
Amendment to it, your, or is it just?
It's a referral, and it takes precedence, so it's on the floor now.
Okay. All right, so referral then, questions on the referral. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin, through you to Deputy Mayor Crowson. I'm just curious, are you referring the entire resolution to Civic Works, or was the thought that should this move forward, the information and discussion be referred to Civic Works?
I'm recommending moving the entire motion to Civic Works SBC, because it'll be much more holistically done as part of the Transportation Master Plan, and unless Mr. Brerly has different information, I think we can still get the information back to council by September 2022.
All right.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, as the counselor has indicated, this connects in with information that will be informed by the Transportation Master Plan. We can certainly, so the Acting Mayor Dodek articulated it exceptionally well. He's exactly right in the discussion, we're supportive of the approach. We can respond back to this piece in September, and then the final Transportation Master Plan that will come in late 2022 will have all of the information to inform future discussions.
I guess my only question is, and it's just a process question, because it hasn't come up before, if we refer this to the SPC, Civic Works, will not this resolution just go in front of Civic Works sometime in January, and then if they decide to go down this path, it's basically, I guess I'm just wondering, in my opinion, the results of all this information refer definitely to Civic Works, because it'll inform the Transportation Master Plan, et cetera, but referring the actual resolution to them, doesn't that mean they'll just look at the resolution, come back to council with a recommendation that, yes, you should?
In the end, yes, it'll stay on the status of directed resolutions, but it'll be the work of the SPC to do, and that is what the SBCs are designed to do, is to lead this work of council and to bring it back. And so this could have just been added to the agenda if SBC didn't nail it at any point, and so that's, those are the working units now, so this would be much better held at the SBC. We have the deadline, it would still be brought back, but there'd be now a group that would be guiding this.
And I guess my final question, would there be a material difference in referring this in total to SBC as is, or with an amendment and further be it resolved that the reporting information be referred to SBC to inform the Transportation Master Plan? I'm just wondering if there's two ways to approach it.
It's just as easy to do it either way, but this just gets it done, and it's, you know, and it's off to SBC's work.
Mayor Dodek.
I guess the question is that the process that you're outlining seems to be a lot more cumbersome than it needs to be. The official business resolution is very directed, and the dates were given in council, or were given to me in consultation with administration to ensure that they had the appropriate time to do it. So how do I phrase that in the form of a question? The question is, does it not make more sense to have this dealt with by administration and then brought back to council as a whole, because it is a very directed, a very specific resolution? Would you not agree with me?
Anything that comes through SBC will come back to council as well, so you're still going to get the information all back to council. It just allows the SBC who's doing the work on the Transportation Master Plan to figure out the best way for them to work on it, knowing the deadline that is there as well.
Yeah, so my question is then on process, it's been a while that I've dealt with referral motions. There's no debate on referral motions, or is there?
Debate on referral motions.
Questions on debate?
There are questions on debate, okay, so, so I guess at this point in time, it would be Deputy Mayor Crowson's turn to debate, unless there are other questions, if I understand the process.
No further questions, yes, you'd open with debate.
Well, I think I have already given my reasons for this. I think it can just be done much more holistically, because the Transportation Master Plan is going to look at all the different roads, including the roads that might feed into a third bridge at either site, and it's going to be looking at it from, not just from cars, but from bikes and from pedestrians and from all different modes, and this is something that, the third bridge is what people are thinking of, but it fits in beautifully with the work that Civic Works is working on this year, and I would see that this fits in with their plans.
My debate is that, for the very reason that Deputy Mayor Crowson suggests there should be a holistic approach, is the reason that it should not be, because this official business resolution really is targeted for a very specific purpose, and it's simply to deal with another site and to see what the tax consequences would be, and also to give the ability for the city to, if, advocate for grant money, if it turns out that might even be a possibility. So I would ask council not to refer it to a subcommittee, to have it reviewed holistically, as the phrase was used, but rather to leave it as it is, a resolution of council specifically directed to the administration, to bring back the specific information that's set out in the official business resolution.
Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I understand the desire of this referral motion, but at the moment, I don't think I can support it, because I think it'd be important for council as a whole to either endorse or not the concept that is being presented in front of us now, because right now, the concept is, there's one river crossing, that's where it's going to be. And I'm thinking, if council supports this and say, "We think we should maybe explore other options," and then once that happens, refer that to the Civic Works SPC to incorporate into their discussions on the Transportation Master Plan. I think that's the appropriate way to go, rather than saying, "Just refer it to them, and then they'll come back to council with their thoughts," and at that time, council may say, "No, we only want the one." I think we need to settle it right here, whether council is interested in more than one option, and refer that to SPC. So I won't be supporting referring the motion to SBC, but I likely will be presenting an amendment that will pass or not, that the work here gets referred to the SBC. I hope that makes sense.
Any further debate? I too will not be supporting this referral motion, as similar to the comments from my two previous colleagues, and so with that, Counselor Middleton-Hope.
I'm just going to ask Acting Mayor Dodek if you can provide just a little bit more clarity. I'm just not all that clear on this. I think I, is the question that you're asking to refer additional research as to river crossings in general?
This, just, this is just for the referral motion, is it regarding the referral motion, this isn't on the, the motion itself, it's just to have it referred to an SBC?
Yeah, what I'm asking is, is he asking us to vote on a motion to refer this to SPC?
No, that was Deputy Mayor Crowson's, was the referral, was asking.
Wants the information, without any background around it.
So, so it's not on the resolution, it's a referral resolution from Deputy Mayor? Find any more debate?
All the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That is, three, three to, okay.
We're now back to?
Lost three to six, we're back to?
A roll call has to be done, if it's two or more.
Two or more, roll call, all right. So Deputy Mayor, or so Deputy, sorry.
Counselor?
Madam Clerk.
Counselor Carlson. This is on the referral. Sorry, I didn't catch it.
Opposed.
Counselor Middleton-Hope.
I think I'm opposed.
And this is on the referral?
Yeah.
To refer this motion to the Standing Policy Committee. Counselor Palladino?
I'm opposed.
Counselor Parker?
Opposed.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
Opposed.
Acting Mayor Dodek?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Crowson?
In favor.
Mayor Higgin?
Opposed.
And Counselor Campbell?
Favor.
Okay, so that's two to seven, it's lost. So we're back to the main motion.
Back to the main motion. So I believe, now, questions, we did have questions, I don't know if there's any additional questions on the main motion. Counselor Carlson?
I did have some questions, but I think I'll first add an amendment, because I like where Deputy Mayor Crowson was going with where the information should be gathered and dissected and put in with the larger package, so I would like to add, further be it resolved, that administration report back to council through the Civic Works SPC. I think that's, that's where the discussion, I think, Madam State Clerk, does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense, so on the last clause after council, it would say, through the Civic Works Standing Policy Committee. Correct.
That way, if this passes and council is open to other third river crossing locations, possibilities, it will go to, all the information will go to Civic Works as they work through the Transportation Master Plan, and it'll be more holistic.
Questions on the amendment? Acting Mayor Dodek.
I'm a little confused, because what you said is a little different than what I'm reading. So does the answer to the resolution I'm proposing come back to us first as council? Or does the answer go to Civic Works? And if it goes to Civic Works first, then what's the point of my official business resolution?
I guess my thoughts, Acting Mayor Dodek, are that Civic Works is the appropriate venue, they've had all the discussions around her Transportation Master Plan, they're the ones that do all the investigation and thorough discussions on these, and then bring their reports back to council, so it's basically just a process, and I think it is the appropriate process.
Well, let me pose the question differently, okay. So if they come back and say, this is, the current site is the preferred site, okay, then there's nothing to be, that needs to go to the Civic Works Standing Policy Committee. But if they come back and say, yes, we should consider it as southerly, then I can see it getting referred to Civic Works Standing Policy Committee, but not to come back to the Civic Works Standing Policy Committee, who then filters the information and then comes back to council. You see what I'm saying?
Did you have the Director of Infrastructure, and I don't know if there's any clarification, is this, to offer some possible clarification, Mr. Brerly?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the intention was to come back, we would look at the 2009 circulation road study and the points of reference that were through that study. So as Acting Mayor Dodek indicated, this wasn't a further review involving another consultant or anything else. This would be reviewing the methodology that was used to get us to this point, and the points of reference cost the same as the cost information that was provided for the plebiscite. We would do that, anything further, so if we were to look at a more detailed study, that would have a cost associated with it, probably in the range of $300,000 to $500,000 if we were to look at, say, the Popsen Park route, and review additional information. So I don't know if that provides additional clarification, but it was, it was exactly as Acting Mayor Dodek laid out, that's how we would proceed.
Give any comfort, Counselor Carlson, you're?
Sorry, Mayor Higgin, if you'll allow me, then, so as written, the resolution is basically just coming back to council and say, yeah, there are other opportunities. I'm like, I'm just not sure what's going to come back without a good discussion or thoughtfulness put into it.
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor, so we, looking at the methodology, so let's say as we work through the methodology, we would see that something has substantially changed since the 2009 circulation study. That could change things. If nothing has changed in that methodology, we would come back and say, based on escalation factors, Consumer Price Index, Industrial Product Price Index, escalation factors, here's what the estimated costs of these would be, reaffirming that Chinook option, that's, the TMP, Transportation Management, or Master Plan, really speaks to that, the option that was confirmed, the Chinook Trail location, and it would inform future costs on the, on the Popsen Park, based on that. Does that, hopefully that provides some clarification, if not, I'm happy to.
I'm, I'm not sure, only because for me, reading this resolution, it really isn't, as maybe Acting Mayor said and you're confirming, is that it's just reread the reports and go, yep, they still hold true. When I read this, it says, no, go away and look at different sites. Am I not reading that right? sites." Am I not reading that right? Administration investigate further potential site or sites. So you're, it's, that's what it says. Therefore be it resolved that administration investigate further potential site or sites for the third river crossing further south from the current proposed location. Okay, help me.
Okay, let's see if I can clarify for you. Because I said that they were to look at their existing data, okay, so maybe I confused you by saying site or sites further south. The only site that I'm referring to is the site that's already referred to in the existing reports. Now, one of the reasons I put sites is if something comes up and they say, you know, they say something like, "Well, you know, if we move at 500 meters, you know, it's not the same site." So that's what it's looking at. Existing reports, whether the change in the footprint on the west side has changed their minds, but I'm only looking at whatever the sites that were referred to in 2009 that were discussed. That was the intention.
Okay, thank you. That may have confused me. So it's basically just say, "Re-look at it." All right, that unfortunately doesn't add my support a whole lot to that because I know it's going to come back. I guess in here as well, Acting Mayor, did you ever contemplate, you said, I believe, you used to militate against the existing route. Did you ever consider saying militate against a third river crossing? If the review comes back and says...
Actually, what you have to do is go look back at the 2009 resolution, which I have not requested that it be changed. Where is it? Just looking for it.
Very first bullet.
Yeah, it's a third, and further be it resolved, and further be it resolved that future planning investigate means to delay or eliminate the need for a future river crossing. That has not ever changed. That is a live resolution that was passed in 2009. So that's why I didn't add that in there, because it's already an existing resolution.
Part three, I don't have it in front of me.
Want to see mine?
I might have to.
It's a piece of paper with writing on it.
I'll just, but that's, I think that's enough of my questions. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just, I guess, I'm just, I'm just, this is a very broad thing. I mean, to me, voting either way gets us the same result in the end, does it not? Is that, we want information, we want to go forward with all of this, as the resolution says, whether it comes to the Standing Committee or council, it just doesn't really matter. Can someone say, is that fair to say, I mean, Belinda, is that what you said, potato, patata, and that's sort of, and Lloyd, you're going through, you're going to go through the process, whether it's to come back to a Standing Committee or to council, correct?
Through the mayor, yeah, whatever's the will of council, that's what we'll do.
So it's kind of a, let's get it done, kind of a thing, in my mind. That's, I guess that's not a question, it's just, yeah, I just, so I understand, because I love the way that Deputy Mayor explained it, and we want to go away and do this, but I also like going to a Standing Committee, which is why we created Standing Committees to come forward and do this in-depth work, to come forward, we're all going to get the same information. So I'm good with either way, as long as this, we just get through this.
Was there, we've got a proposed amendment here. I'm sorry, Counselor Carlson.
I did put it on the board. I don't know, do we need seconders anymore? No?
No seconders.
I'll just, I think I've made myself clear. I'll just call for the vote unless there's... If I fail, I fail. I've lost votes before.
Debate on the amendment. Anybody? Not a debate? Call, oh, or Counselor, or Deputy Acting Mayor?
Yes, the amendment, proposed amendment is effectively a backdoor of getting, back to the referral motion that was just defeated. So I would ask that council not, or that this amendment be defeated, because in effect, it's a backdoor referral motion that was defeated.
With that, did I take that as Counselor Carlson, your opening and close, I take it already? Question's been called. All in favor? Opposed?
I do have to do a roll call.
We'll have to do a roll call on that.
Counselor Middleton-Hope? Counselor Palladino?
Opposed.
Counselor Parker?
Opposed.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
Opposed.
Acting Mayor Dotick?
Opposed.
Mayor Croson?
In favor.
Mayor Higgins?
Opposed.
Counselor Campbell?
In favor.
And Counselor Carlson?
In favor.
Six, that's lost.
Can you read out the, how did it go? Oh!
Three to seven. Or three, sorry. That's, we've got an extra person. Three to six. It's been a long day. So we're back to the main resolution, and questions have been asked. Is there anyone who has additional questions on the original resolution as it was presented by Acting Mayor Dotick? King Nun, if Mayor Dotick to open up debate?
Yeah, I think I've debated this enough.
Any further debate? Counselor Carlson?
Thanks. I don't think it's much of a surprise. I was one of the four that lost trying to change or at least keep options open in, when was it, 2010? I can't, nine? 2009. So I will be supporting this. I do hope that the spirit of the discussion is that we do keep an open mind, that it's not just the other possible site. I hope that the word verbiage that's in there about sites is considered if there may be opportunities further south or in, as Acting Mayor Dotick said, within 500 meters, that'd be nice, too. Or different options. So I've always been in favor of other options. When I saw the, when I first got elected and saw where the Chinook River Crossing was proposed, I always thought how ludicrous to try and alleviate the biggest traffic jams in Lethbridge by putting another road to the biggest traffic jam in Lethbridge. So I will be in full support of this. I hope that we come up with some solutions, and I think, as Acting Mayor Dotick said, especially a solution that would bring the province into a more amenable position to help fund it, because the cost to our citizenry for this is, I won't say outrageous, but it's very steep. Thank you.
Thank you. I too will be supporting this. I know that we've heard a lot about this, and of course, it being on as a referendum question on the ballot here was quite confusing to many we've talked to. It was extremely confusing, as, of course, I was of support of a bridge, but I didn't, would never support a 10%, 12%, 13% tax increase. So it's very, it's difficult to try to explain this whole, you know, what this referendum question was, and it was, it's a difficult one. So this will bring back a little more clarity. Again, furthermore, to what Counselor Carlson had mentioned, we've got one of the busiest intersections in all of Lethbridge, and we want to funnel more to it, that Mayor McGrath and Highway Five. And so it's definitely something that would help. So getting this information back, we've heard that it could come back as early as here, early next year, so I think that's important. So I will be supporting it. Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, I just kind of reiterate, what I just talked about is just, it didn't matter to me whether it came to the Standing Committee or just getting the information. I want the information, that's great. I'm all in favor of what's before us now. So either way, I love what's there. I now am in support.
Deputy Mayor Croson?
I will support this. I already had it on my list to bring to the government, or to the Civic Works SPC as a conversation piece. So that means SPC gets a little bit fewer work and it all goes to staff. So I will support this. Thank you.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel?
I too will support this motion, based on everything that my fellow counselors have said, and I really do think we need this work to be done in order for us to make the best decisions possible to move forward on this project, if that's what we're going to do.
Counselor Parker?
Actually, I think everything's been said. I'm not going to add to any more. Thank you.
All right. To wrap up, Acting Mayor Dotick?
Time to debate whether I support this or not. No, no, just kidding. Call the question.
Question has been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Wow, okay. Ten, zero.
Mayor Higgins, as the next OBM was an addition, and the public has not seen it yet. I would request that council entertain a five-minute recess.
I was just going to ask for a bio-break recess, so we will take a five-minute recess. Official business resolution from Counselor John Middleton Hope, refuse and recycling collection six point two. Whereas the city of Lethbridge, through extensive examination, transitioned to front of property collection for black and blue bin materials in October of 2017, and whereas after successful implementation of the curbside recycling program, council approved the curbside organics collection, green bin, on June 1st, 2021, in their residential waste diversion strategy, developed and approved in 2015. And whereas numerous citizens in groups in older neighborhoods without front driveway access have expressed concerns over these decisions and request the city revisit these decisions. And whereas administration and council support consultative processes, oh my goodness, with citizens on key issues such as refuse and recycling collection, therefore be resolved that council direct administration to present to a future standing policy committee meeting a strategy to resolve these citizen concerns, which includes citizen engagement, and then report to a subsequent civic work standing policy committee meeting on a process that incorporates options that are satisfactory to a broader constituency. Open it up for questions. Any questions? Counselor Carlson?
Mayor Higgins, through you to Counselor Middleton Hope. Counselor Middleton Hope, is this basically a referral motion? Because I believe it's saying that it's all to future SPCs and civic work. So is basically this just to refer this discussion to a, an SPC?
I bow to your superior knowledge, Counselor Carlson, and if that's what the impetus is, then yes. The focus clearly is on asking administration to go back and revisit this based on what I'll provide in a moment or two in terms of my background on it.
Thank you for that. My second question to you, and maybe in your background you would have explained, in the actionable clause, you say, policy committee to resolve the citizens' concerns. I'm just not sure if resolve, what does resolve mean in the context of this resolution? Is it to resolve?
Yeah.
Or is it to consider?
No, I'm looking for problem solving here, and I'm looking for the issues with the bins and the concerns from citizens coming forward, apparently unabated, with any of the machinations that have been performed up until this point. I'm looking for problem solutions here. Does that make sense?
I guess my only, my only question on that would be if one of the solutions is to continue as is contemplated, that is a resolution as well. It's not, it's not for judging the conclusion that will change things. They could change, but they may not. Is that, is that one of the possible resolutions that you do foresee?
Correct, and then it would be the city administration's responsibility to market that sufficiently to abate some of the concerns that our citizens have expressed vis-à-vis front refuse and recycling pickup.
Thank you.
In older neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further questions? I don't see any debate, open debate. Oh, sorry.
Just a quick question to Counselor Middleton Hope. Is this mostly referred to the London Road area, this situation, or is this citywide?
Well, I think Alderman, Counselor Campbell, I was going to call you Alderman. Counselor Campbell, we've all received the complaints. We've all received the notes and the letters and the emails. Yes, London Road area is one of the areas that has expressed concerns, but there are individuals in other areas of the city that have also expressed concerns with the current strategy of the city.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Through you to the acting city manager or designate. Just, has this process already been done? Are we just replowing old ground, or are there new solutions, new discussions that we could consider?
Thank you for the question, and through, through the chair, I might refer to Lloyd on this question.
Yep.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Can you repeat the question?
Oh, sorry. It was, I know that previous council had quite a lot of discussions and presentations and interactions with waste and recycling folks over this. We've had presentations from different neighborhood groups, et cetera. Are there, will there be new considerations that could be considered? Or I guess I'm just wondering about, or is it, we'll just review all this reports and et cetera that council's already gone through?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. We'll do this in two parts. So I'll start it off, and our general manager, Waste and Recycling, is also online, and he can, he can add anything further. So initially, the intention is to, to look at the process that got us to this point, and the assumptions or council recommendations that were, were part of that process, and anything further. So I'll let Mr. Sanchez take it from there.
Sanchez?
Thanks, Lloyd. So just to, to spend a little bit on what was already presented, we are going to go back and look at what we have done in the past. Counselor Carlson is right. We have done a cost benefit analysis and multiple presentations to council and also to SPC. And the idea is now to go back and put a proposal and a plan in place in order to, to create a strategy to resolve the citizen concerns. In the particular case of London Road, we, we had a meeting with council and the London Road Neighborhood Association a while ago, and the intent is to, any, before any other changes are going to be implemented, we're going to go back and engage with the neighborhood and try to make sure we, we get their feedback and present the options that we're doing. So we, we're gonna look into separate ideas that we have to, and we're gonna bring those new ideas to council, so, so council can see those and make a recommendation or a decision.
Yeah, and thank you for that. If I can just, I thought this was already in process, and that's why I wasn't clear on what was actually being presented here, because I thought, I thought the move was already paused and all this engagement and the addressing concern. I thought this was already being done. Am I, is this anything, is this something new, or is this already in process? That was my question, pretty much.
It is in process. You're right. We, we're not doing any other move. Last one that was implemented was in February of this year, and after that move is when we did the presentation and the cost benefit analysis for, for council. So the, the lanes move is on hold until after the implementation of curbside organics. So that means that it's not going to resume until 2024, but the idea is that we're going to create this engagement plan with the residents after we decide to, to continue assessing the next areas that we have in plan.
So I guess, final question then, if I can. So whether this resolution is brought forward or passed or fails today, this will happen. This is happening. But we could use this perhaps as a, a community engagement tool to let people know that it is happening and that the engagement is happening and a process is being crafted and a strategy is being crafted. Is that possible?
I think the resolution that we have in front of council today is, is a good tool because it will actually direct administration to come back next year to an SPC, and at that time, we can invite the neighborhoods of the London Road and the other residents that wants to get an update in the project, and we can actually go in public and explain what are the next steps. So again, I think this is a good approach to come back and direct administration to do this.
Excellent. Thank you.
No further questions? Oh, Counselor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Through to you to Mr. Sanchez. Would this mean then, if we're looking to engage all citizens, we're looking to engage even those who've had their pickup moved to the front, and we would consider rescinding that move and moving it back to the back pickup if we saw that feedback?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. At this point, what we're looking is to, any further move that we're doing, we're going to assess and engage with residents. As we presented to council in May this year, the move that we have done to date, we, we will be open to engage and talk to residents. There is a rationale and there is an assessment that was implemented for those. And in the cost benefit analysis, we, we only have a few areas where we, we actually have been talking still to residents. I will say it's only one or two areas where this is happening. But for the most part, those areas that were implemented, they have been successful. But we will, we will look into all the options, and those residents that still were affected by the changes, will have an opportunity to engage with us and to look into the options that we have implemented.
Thank you.
No further questions? I'll ask Counselor Middleton Hope to open debate.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll make this a little briefer than Acting Mayor Dotick. As all council is aware, this issue has been percolating for some time and was an issue during the recent municipal election. We have all of us received complaints regarding non-rear pickup of refuse and recyclables. I would like our administration to constructively address this issue, work with residents most impacted on solutions, to resolve this issue once and for all. That may look like we are doing all we can, or there are options available that may be successful, but we'll take time to research and to implement. We have an obligation wherever to do the best in terms of solving problems for our citizens and bringing these forward certainly to, to city council for deliberation. I ask for your support to direct administration to conduct additional research and dialogue as needed, and to report back to SPC with a strategy, and then report to the civic works policy committee for action.
Deputy Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Thank you for bringing this forward. The SPCs are actually designed with public engagement in mind. Anyone who wishes to can actually request to speak at a public, at a SPC can be part of a conversation, and SPCs are always designed with three pillars: administration, the committee members, and the public. So when this comes forward to a public, to an SPC, any member of the public can ask to be part of that conversation, either in person at the SPC or through Teams. So this is just reiterating what the SPCs are actually designed to do. So I will support this. We don't know what the answers will be that the civic works will bring back, but the public is always welcome, and this is just another opportunity to let the public know that that is their way to have their say and to be part of the conversation. So yes, I'll support this, and I do just want to take the opportunity to remind residents again, look to the SPCs if you want to have your voice said. Thank you.
Thank you. I too will support this, and thank you, Counselor Middleton Hope, for bringing this forward. It's something, as you indicated, we've heard from quite a few residents, both by emails, phone calls, and it's, it's something that I think is important to be addressed, and so I'm glad that it's going to be addressed, looked at, and that we can finally come to some, some form of conclusion to this. So thank you very much for bringing it forward, and I will support this. And to close. Call for the vote?
Like you, and call for the vote.
Vote's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll move on to bylaws. I have a motion from Acting Mayor Dotick, Bylaw 6239, 2022 Distribution Tariff Bylaw, for second reading, seven point one one. Be resolved that Bylaw 6239, 2022 Distribution Tariff Bylaw be given second reading.
Okay. First reading was November 30th of this year. The bylaw doesn't actually cover the actual cost of the electricity used by customer. That's done by the supplier that has been contracted by the user or the city, who is the default supplier absent any third-party agreements with the supplier. What it does is deals with establishing the electric distribution tariff. It's done annually, and thus it's Merry Christmas time. The bylaw covers the cost for wire service, essentially the cost associated in getting electricity to customers through the transmission infrastructure, which is owned by the city. The distribution tariff itself is made up of two main components and is meant to recover the costs associated in delivering electricity to customers. The first component is transmission access fee, which is collected from Lethbridge customers to cover the cost of provincial transmission. So this is a flow-through fee that goes to the Alberta Electric System Operator. We don't set these fees either, and for the next year, they are increasing 7.5% across all rate classes and are intended to meet the increased AESO costs. The second part is the distribution access fee, which are collected by the city to cover our costs related to the electric infrastructure we own and that provides the electrical connection to our clients. This will increase by 1% across all classes and is needed because the revenue is flat, but costs continue to increase. These two tariff items appear on utility statements as well as does a local access fee will not change next year. There's my bill. In summary, the upshot of the bylaw is that there will be an average increase for residential customers of about $3 per month for an average residential customer using 750 kilowatt-hours per month. The rates will go up about 2.4%, 3% for commercial customers, and slightly less, 2.37% for industrial ones. As I said, we have to pass a distribution tariff bylaw annually, and thus I ask for council support. Questions?
Deputy Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Question to the city manager designate or designate. We have the distribution access fee increasing by 1.0%. What is the reason behind the increase, and is there any way that we could, as a community, find a way to keep that at zero?
Yes, good afternoon, Deputy Mayor Croson. The average increase of 1% is essentially a result of a couple of things going on right now, but one of them is COVID. COVID has come in and changed the distribution pattern, the amount of demand on our system. So that is maintained relatively flat. However, we still have some new customers coming in that we still have to service and supply and build out our infrastructure to meet those needs. So the costs continue to come in, but our revenue remains flat. So that's the, the reason for asking for 1%.
Was there any work done on trying to figure out a way within your department to keep it at zero?
Yes, there has been. I mean, as everybody around this table is aware, we ended up with an operating budget review in 2020 where we cut costs. We've reduced full-time staff equivalents in the department. So we've done, we've cut the costs where we can right now, and this is the result of, of those findings and of those searches.
And when we look at other communities across the province, are we in line with what they are doing this year? Are they having the same pressures from their communities?
They are. I don't have specific numbers right now. Off the top of my head, I can always get those for you. But yes, everybody, every utility across the, the province is experiencing the same kind of demands, the same kind of issues as we are right now.
And last question, electric cars? Going to put it up more?
Electric cars? What specifically is your question?
I'm just, you're saying, in our report, energy consumption is part of the reason that we're continuing to rise. Electric cars are going to be putting more pressure on the system. Will we be seeing rises like this over the next few years as a result of more use expected?
Well, we're, we're investigating different ways to handle the, the integration of electric
regarding this. And I'm just wondering, who, who can answer this here? Do you feel the current regulatory process is compliant with the AUC requirements here in Lethbridge?
Yes, Mayor Higgin. I can answer that question. Yes, I've been involved with those emails and information requests that have come in. So upon receipt of those information requests, we reached out to our consultant. Chim Cole is a regulatory consultant that we work a lot with, as well as Phyllis Smith. She's a highly respected regulatory lawyer with Emory Jameson out of Edmonton. We approached both of them with that question to make sure that, are we doing the, the, taking the correct actions and do we have the correct oversight in place to satisfy the regulatory requirements? And their response was yes, we're doing everything that is required right now.
Are there any impacts that you could think of if we don't proceed today with this?
So if we don't proceed with second and third reading, essentially what that means is the rates that are in place right now in 2021 will carry over into 2022. And what that means is on the distribution access, the 1% increase will result, that's approximately $320,000 is what that 1% equates to. So the distribution access fee will automatically be run at a deficit of that $320,000. The transmission access fee, which is a provincial flow-through, we can recover that cost, those costs using rider C. So we can still recoup the costs and pass those on to the province as necessary. But there's also the other impact on the city financial, whereas the MCAF fee, the municipal consent and access fee, is billed on the distribution tariff. So if we do not increase the distribution tariff, the fees collected to the city through the MCAF are reduced as well. They'll remain whole for, you know, what they were in 2021 will be for 2022 as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Then Mayor Dodek for debate.
Yeah. I just was looking at my bill, and the distribution access fees for November were $42.97, which was based on, I hate to admit this, but a little bit higher average consumption than the 750 kilowatt-hours. So 1% of $42.97 would be 4.3 cents per month. So just to put it in a little bit of context, and remember as was noted, some of the charges, the transmission access fees, we have no control over that. And the reason given for the distribution access fee increase was, as noted, the costs go up and it was flat usage. And then the local access fee is not changing. So I would ask for council support with respect to the second reading.
For debate, seeing none, take it as your close. Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And for third reading, be resolved that Bylaw 6329, 2022 Distribution Tariff Bylaw be given third reading and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Mayor Dodek.
Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Next, another resolution from Acting Mayor Dodek, Bylaw 63.
0.75% per year for property taxes which aren't prepaid through the monthly tip program, but it only applies to prepayments that occur before the end of February 2022 and are in effect only until June 30, 22. It also provides the arrears penalty structure and also identifies the date that apply regarding payment of taxes and, and when arrear penalties apply. Because of COVID-19, there was a relaxation of the penalty provisions regarding the payment of property taxes in 2021. So even though technically taxes were due on June 30, 2021, citizens were allowed to actually pay their taxes up to, I think it was the end of September, without any penalty being applied. That relaxation will not extend to the 2022 tax year. And so it still requires taxes to be paid by June 30, 22, and failure to do so will result in penalties of 7% if paid after June 30th up to the end of July, and then 1% per month thereafter until the arrears have been paid. For the taxes that may be owed for previous year, the penalty is 12% per year calculated daily until payment. There is also a provision that allows for a taxpayer to defer payment of that portion of any current year property tax increase greater than 10%, unless the increase is due to putting on a building or improvements on the property. And finally, the tax manager can choose to, well, this is such a gift, to not apply the penalties for late payment referred to if that penalty is $20 or less. The bylaw is fascinating reading for students of Boolean logic who enjoy if-this, then-that legalese, and I would encourage members of council to wade into my world. I would ask for council support.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Dodek. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. And thank you, Acting Mayor, for, for that description. Couple of quick questions. The 0.75 reduction, is, is that identical to the tip reduction? I'm just trying to recall.
To Counselor Carlson, yes, that is exact same as the rate.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And the second question, the, the gift, as Acting Mayor spoke of it, the under $20. Previous council had quite a debate around whether we, we could delegate any of these, but because this is a penalty, it's not really taxes, council can delegate the, the, the not applying the, the penalties to the city manager. Is that correct? Is that the, is that the difference? Because council cannot delegate tax cancellations, but we can delegate the penalties. Is, is that the nuance that I'm sensing here?
Counselor Carlson, that one I'm not quite sure on. And actually, I think Mr. Lavery's, I thought I saw him on, on.
Keyboard is.
Keyboard. His keyboard's there, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Lavery.
And, and he appears.
Mr. Lavery? Can you?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that. Keyboard was down. Yes, we can, we can do that.
Okay, so it is just the nuance between the penalty versus the actual taxes?
Yeah. Yes.
And, and further to that, as, as Acting Mayor Dodek pointed out, was there any discussion on $20 versus 50 or 80 or nickel? How did 20 come up? Do we have a lot of folks that get a $20 penalty? Is that?
Yeah, it, it's just for administrative purpose. There's anything much over that we feel, you know, that something should go to council.
Okay, so we'll expect a few $21 ones to come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Debate, and I think you've opened the debate. Is that?
I've closed it, too.
You've closed it, too? And I don't see anyone else wanting to debate, so.
I'm not allowing it.
With that, it sounds like he's called for the vote.
I've called for the vote.
All in favor? Any opposed? None. All right. And for third reading, be resolved that Bylaw 6335, 2022 Incentives and Prepayments Penalty and Tax Deferral Bylaw be given third reading and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Mayor, Acting Mayor Dodek.
Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So carries. Next, I have a resolution brought by Deputy Mayor Krosen, Chair of the Governance Standing Policy Committee. Update to policy CC10, City Council Remuneration and Benefits, 8.11. Be resolved that City Council approve policy CC10 as amended as an attachment for... Deputy Mayor Krosen.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So every term, it is the plan to review every one of the city council policies, done through audit, governance, et cetera. And so what's up before us right now is CC10, which is City Council Remuneration and Benefits. Now, there is no good way for a council to determine their own wages. So several terms ago, what was decided was one of the better ways out of all the bad ways was to create a policy. And so this policy actually takes it out of our hands immediately, and it follows the policy about what our wages and benefits are. So administration reviewed the policy and they saw some outdated errors. It still talks about Alberta Health charges, et cetera. There are some talks about back when a third of the wages was tax-free through the federal government, and that has changed. So some of it was housekeeping. It came forward to governance to be discussed, and a few changes were made there as well. And it's now being brought forward for what I am sure will be more discussion and changes. So some of the things you will note in it is we have a unwritten rule that the deputy mayor gets 10.6% or $5,000 paid out over the six months of the term. That has now been incorporated in. There is also something now incorporated for the acting mayor. Some more language has been put in to be very clear that if our wages are higher than the comparative places, that ours is frozen, et cetera. So that information has been all laid out there. So there's been some changes to the policy. And it's brought forward now for, as I said, if anyone has questions, any debate, any amendments, this is the time to make them.
Acting Mayor Dodek.
Yes, I, I think I provided the city clerk with a written amendment dated today. And then I'll explain what it's about.
Right. Proposed Amendment 8.1.1, updated policy CC10. Number one, delete on page two of the proposed policy the following words. When a councillor serves in the role of acting mayor, their compensation is increased by 5.3% for the period they are serving in the role. And number two, delete at the end of page four of the proposed policy the following words, and addition of compensation for the acting mayor. Mayor Dodek. We'll get that yet.
I'll give you a little bit of background on this. When, when we were at the, at the Standing Policy Committee, talking about the remuneration or extra remuneration for the deputy mayor of being 10% for the six months that they're in that position, there was also some discussion and questions as to whether there should be some additional monies provided to, to the acting mayor. Now, at that time, I did recall that when I was on council previously, usually the deputy mayor did take up whatever shortfall there was when the, the mayor was, wasn't available. But the acting mayor was very rarely used or, or needed for that purpose, for, for mayor purpose, although based on the way people have been calling me mayor, I'm not so sure about that anymore. But so although we, we did have a discussion about it at the Standing Committee, then I, I chatted a little bit more about it with folks. And it turns out really that I understand the necessity or the rationale for the deputy mayor having an, a boost of 10% during the six months that they're deputy mayor. But I don't think it's necessary for the acting mayor, but because they're just not, he or she is just not called that often for that purpose. So administration put that in there because of the discussion that we had at the Standing Policy Committee. And I treat Standing Policy Committees as, sometimes as a sort of a first reading, like a bylaw, to get it to council for debate. So what I'm asking is to approve the, the model or the policy, except removing any increased pay for the acting mayor during the six months that they're acting mayor. Any questions?
Counselor Middleton-Hope, on the amendment?
Yes, so to Mayor Dodek. I view this as, and, and being in that position, of course, you can speak to it certainly a lot better than I can, but have we considered beyond merely the work, the accountability that comes with that additional acting responsibility?
Well, actually, I did. Because really, right now, it's, it is, you know, basically an adjective in front of, of a name. And I don't, I don't believe with four months left in my term as acting mayor, that there's really any more responsibility that I will have to undertake nor any more duties. Now, you know, I appreciate that I'm the acting mayor, so I guess I'm voting against financial interest, which apparently if you vote against your own pecuniary interest, it's okay under the Municipal Government Act. But it's not set in stone. If something changes, like for example, if two months down the road, all of a sudden, it turns out that the acting mayor position really has like 10 more hours a week added to that function, we could always come back and change the policy. So I'm, I'm just going on based on my past experience, what I've seen during the, the first two months of this term, and then discussions with other, or members of council who have been on council the last term, seeing that in fact the mayor, the acting mayor functioned in terms of time spent responsibilities is not that much more, if at all, than a councillor.
If I, if I can just lob one up for you. Have you communicated with other municipalities of similar sizes that may or may not have the acting mayor role and whether they compensate accordingly?
I have not.
Nope. I think I can add a bit more to that conversation. The acting mayor's role depends on how good the deputy mayor does his or her role. And I think that was the conversation at governance. We have seen, and this has been several councils passed, that some deputy mayors choose not to do the full deputy mayor work, and then the acting mayor falls upon it. So if every, if every member of council, when their deputy mayor does their role well, then the acting mayor picks up two extra committees. So it's not a huge load. And so there's the balance. The other thing, when we were looking at this policy, comparing it to other communities about how pay is, is quite difficult. The amount of pay overall can be compared, but how they pay is difficult. Because some pay for, you get extra for every committee, some pay it in different ways. Not everyone does it the same way we do, where you get a little extra as deputy mayor. Some only do it in certain ways. So it's, it's, it is not apples to oranges to compare against other municipalities.
Thank you for that. My, I have, I have a follow-up comment in that regard then. Is there a purpose in having the acting mayor's role? Is it a requirement under a piece of legislation that we have an acting mayor and a deputy mayor? If there doesn't appear to be any utility, perhaps then we obfuscate that position and go with a deputy mayor?
Is this in regards to this, Counselor, Counselor Krosen?
I'm sure our city solicitor can add more, but in the MGA, you must have a deputy mayor. You may have an acting mayor. But we have found, again, through our procedure bylaw, we have given responsibilities to the acting mayor. So not having an acting mayor would mean, you know, and it's doable, but it means bylaw changes because we do have the acting mayor, as I said, assigned to specific committees. They are assigned to Agenda Review Committee and to the Advocacy Committee, neither which, like again, that doesn't go to whether or not there's pay, but it does go to whether or not we have an acting mayor.
Counselor Carlson.
Mayor Higgin, I, I think my question was almost answered there in that final description of our procedure bylaw. Through to Acting Mayor Dodek. And I appreciate that sometimes there are, isn't a lot of, I think as Counselor Middleton-Hope said, utility to the acting mayor, except by what we've placed on it in our procedure bylaw. And, and that the outside of work events and things, perhaps they don't attend as often as, as the deputy mayor? Correct. But was there any consideration given to the extra duties that we have assigned to the acting mayor, such as Agenda Review Committee, Advocacy Committee, as well as the ad hoc things that council does assign to Agenda Review Committee and the mayor, deputy mayor, acting mayor, as well as seeing the administrivia almost of the, the flag policy oversight, the letters of support that come through? Was, was that a consideration at all?
No, it wasn't. So I withdraw my amendment.
All right. Well then. Okay. So that's not going to a Standing Policy Committee or something? That's... So the proposed Amendment 8.1.1, it's now on the table, so I guess it still has to be debated and voted on. Correct if I'm wrong, Madam City Clerk? Even if it's withdrawn, it's now part of council? So question, okay, so this can be pulled right?
I'll, I'll explain. I, I know it seemed to be on the fly, but you know, I, I did it in haste as I was thinking about it. But then comments made by both Deputy Mayor Kraus and, and Counselor John Middleton-Hope, as well as what, what Counselor Carlson said as well, and then the extra duties involved in terms of being on those particular committees. So on reflection, I think I may have acted in haste and thus the reason for my withdrawal. Again, it's not written in stone, so it's something that, you know, could be revisited not written in stone. So it's something that, you know, could be revisited if it turns out that maybe the amendment was appropriate. But at this point in time, I have been convinced by council colleagues that perhaps I acted in haste, and thus the reason for my withdrawal of the amendment.
Thank you for that. So it has been withdrawn. We are back to the original resolution, 8.1.1 by Deputy Mayor Crowson. And questions, I believe we had questions come in quickly after the amendment. So is there any questions on the resolution as presented earlier? None? Then I will turn it over for, to start open debate, Deputy Mayor Crowson.
I realize there's no questions from my colleagues, but there are sure to be questions from the public. So we did have a robust discussion of this by the Governance SBC, and that's where the recommendations have come forward, as I said, both from administration and from SBC. And we did try to look at, again, making sure this policy is as much out of our hands as possible on a day-by-day basis. So we're not setting it. The policy is there. It gets reviewed by council on an ongoing basis, just to make sure, again, that there's no old information in here, et cetera. And then it goes to administration. They run the numbers based on the comparative communities, and our wages are set in that manner. So that's how this policy is set up. We have made the adjustments and changes that have been noted. And if there are no more questions, I will open it for debate.
Question or debate, Counselor Carlson?
I think Deputy Mayor covered it. I was just going to encourage my colleagues to support this. Most of them are housekeeping. But the overall policy, which was passed many years ago, I think is a, is a good one because it does take this out of council's hands. It's always a delicate place when you're voting on your own compensation. And this sort of puts it in the hands of administration to deal with. And so it's basically a much more transparent and open way to deal with compensation. And I fully support having this type of policy.
For the debate, I too will support this. If we, if council remembered to go back here, I guess it's been a little over a year ago, when we decided to roll back councils in order, in light of everything that was happening throughout the community and with COVID there. And so roll back and also a freeze here going forward for this next year. So, you know, that's, that's part of what, what we did to, to, you know, levy some of that compensation during that time. So with that, Deputy Mayor Crowson.
Oh, I will call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? I carry this. Moving on, we've had some administrative inquiries, and they will be coming back at a future meeting. They are 11.1, Third River Crossing implication to taxes, 11.2, cost to city of Lethbridge of Curbside Organics program, and 11.3, number of cats allowed in a residence. They will be come back at a future council meeting. Any city council updates? Did you want to, I don't know if you wanted to speak to these future resos? You're okay, acting mayor? You're good?
May speak to them when the responses come back.
Thank you. City Council updates? There's no city council updates?
It was actually a question on, on the inquiries. If I can, just a question on, on the, especially the one about the Third River Crossing, if I can, Mr. Mayor? I'm just wondering, the property tax payer on the projected cost of construction, how would that be, if I can ask Administration, how they're contemplating calculating that? Is that through a borrowing bylaw, through, if I can just, how the thought process going forward is?
Worship the Counselor Carlson. Yes, so what we'll be doing, similar on, that we did in the website, we'll be taking a look at the total costs, looking at the borrowing costs that would be in the annual payments that would incur for each of those areas. And then, of course, calculating that out to being the annual amount of tax requirement that would be necessary to do that. Of course, then, also, I believe in this would be what we'll be providing. And there was also for an average homeowner, what that would look like for property tax.
Perfect. Thank you. Right. And we'll move on to, I guess we'll have to go back into in camera. We didn't finish our, our closed meeting report. So we will have a motion to go back into closed session. Counselor Campbell, all in favor? Oppose?
Welcome back to council meeting. We're going to continue with a closed meeting report. External organization update 14.1. And moved by sponsor for Council Campbell. Moved by Council Campbell be resolved that the council direct that the closed meeting discussions, reports, documents and attachments with respect to external organization update remain confidential pursuant to section 16 harmful to business interests of a third party. Twenty-three local public body confidences and twenty-four advice from officials of the Freedom and Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Further be resolved that council refer this item to administration for more information and return to the closed meeting of council on January 18, 2022.
Call a question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Opposed? So curious. Next I have a motion from Deputy Mayor Croson. Public member appointments to the 2022 boards, commissions and committees will be up on the screen. Any questions? I received this prior. Any questions? It has? Okay. No questions. We'll move to debate.
Well, let me open it first because, you know, so this, of course, is something we do every year. We bring forward recommendations for the various boards, commissions and committees. So first I'd like to thank the chairs and vice chairs who worked with council on interviewing and bringing forward the recommendations. Thank you also to the BCCs for doing their skills matrices and being part of the process. And thank you most definitely to the city clerk and city clerk staff for all the work getting all of this organized, et cetera. It would also be remiss of me not to thank the members of the community who put their names forward. These BCCs would not work without volunteers from the community who want to be part of creating a better system and be part of making the decisions that come forward to council, et cetera. So thank you to everyone who put their names forward, including those who were brought forward to recommendations. This is something we need to get done today if possible because these appointments go in place January 1st and there are several committees and commissions that are there in front of us, including animal welfare, combative sports. Sorry, my fingers aren't slipping. Galt Museum Board, Hardware City Committee, Historic Places Advisory Committee, Lethbridge Library Board, Lethbridge Police Commission, Subdivision and Development Appeal Board and the Youth Advisory Council. And council has the complete list of names. So I will open it for any questions on the process or on any of the recommendations.
Your questions. Debate's been opened. Anybody else have any debate? Council Carlson.
Thanks, Mary. And just a quick question to the city clerk if I can. When we did the interviews, I did interviews on two or three committees. All of the applicants are being contacted just to ensure that everyone who, everyone who applied and was interviewed will be contacted either way, correct?
Yes, they will.
And that'll happen now?
Ryan?
Otherwise, some of them are learning about their appointments as we speak.
Within the week and some contact has already been made.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Debate. Any, any debates? Seeing none, Council Croson to close.
Take this opportunity to let people, or to remind people that we'll be starting this process up again very soon. City Clerk's department is probably already working on new ways to reach out to more people. We'd love to get a more diverse group every year. We're trying to reach out across this community. So if you're interested in what we do on boards, commissions and committees, reach out to the city clerk's office, look for the applications that are going to be coming out. This is an ongoing process to get new voices and new people around the table. And again, this is about who's been appointed this year. And unless there is any further debate, I will call the question.
No further debate. Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? So curious. Next I have a resolution from Councilor Schmidt-Rempel. Closed meeting onibus motion 14.3, 14.4, 14.5 and 14.6 be resolved that council direct the closed meeting discussions, reports, documents and attachments with respect to tax and assessment, temporary sheltering, indigenous resource hub, strategic planning remain confidential pursuant to section 16 harmful to business interests of a third party. Twenty-three local public body confidences. Twenty-four advice from officials. Twenty-five harmful to economic and other interests of a public body and twenty-nine information that, that is or will be available to the public of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Councilor Schmidt-Rempel.
I'll call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Opposed? So curious. And I'll declare this meeting closed. We're not closed.